A few handouts. And I want to talk about, I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to look at the survey. I only have five copies of the family survey that passed around.
Share one.
Alright, so a few things. In terms, I wanted to just provide my perspective from the climate survey sessions. I know that Chris and Rick are going to talk about it. I think one of the things that I heard from parents is that they're not feeling that they're fully considered as stakeholders in the school. And they feel there's still a need where, you know, for an outlet where parents can share their concerns but also be part of the decision-making process. And I think that's something that, you know, we need to talk through and understand how we can hear parent concerns. And I think it probably is something that will fall out of the climate survey implementation task force. And the other thing I would say is I really do still believe that a school council will help create the connections that we're missing. So that was just my perspective from sitting in on the parent session. And then I also attended one of the principal sessions. And I did share some of my, some of this with Dr. Demello already. What I heard from the parent community in terms of the sessions is, you know, the times of the sessions were tough for some working parents at four o'clock. But I understand that it had a lot to do with having a site visit and the process. But I just wanted to share that. Additionally, I think the other thing is, is we shared a principal search update prior to Dr. Demello joining AMSA. And we never wrote, we shared a small update, but I think, you know, who was on the committee? What was their process? Still needs to be elaborated a little bit more. I'm not sure if you can share that in your ED update. So I think those are, those are key things. And in terms of communication, the other thing I wanted to share with everybody is this BOP update. So, a few months ago, when we were first talking about the climate survey, I made a recommendation, I think when, just this first day, that maybe the representatives would send out a, like a BOP news update to the community, our stakeholders, just letting them know what's going on, some of the recent things that we've talked about. So I did, I did begin working on this and we probably need to tweak it and update it based on discussions that happened today or anything new that might come out of it. But it's really to share what's going on to a broader group of people. So that's something that I think we'll definitely look at beginning to send out quarterly was my goal. So if we can send something out November and then maybe February after our plan, you know, our January meeting and then again maybe in May or April, so.
Are you going to send this out in email?
I think it should go as an email blast, yeah.
And then post it at the trustee page?
And then...
Do you want comments on this?
I'm just sharing. If you have comments, you can email me too, okay? The other thing is the family survey. So I sent out the family survey. And what I passed out, actually, I wanted to go through some of the changes that were made. I did, I did revise it a little bit since I sent it out to everyone. So, I identified, I think, you know, measuring overall satisfaction with AMSA culture and academics, it's something that we've always looked at. And understanding how the parents know how to access, access administration, access us, I think is also important. Some of the changes that I made is, I removed questions regarding homework, but we might need to put those back on. So I think that's something that we need to discuss. I just felt that it's, it's a great question for our students to answer. And they'd have a better understanding of, you know, is the homework, you know, how much homework are they really getting? But we can ask the parents, but I just felt that, you know, the student feedback would probably give us what we really needed. I broke out satisfaction for math versus science. And I think we should actually look at, do we want to break out humanities as well? I added a question about the mission, number three. You know, really, do people feel that the education that their children are receiving is preparing them for success in the high-tech world? I added another question under school culture, which I think is 4B. And it's just overall, you know, parent sentiment of how they feel the school is meeting their needs. And I actually pulled that from a survey I found online as I was doing research, just to give us more touch points. And then I updated all references to EdLine plus portal, obviously. And I reworked the board section a little bit, the last section. I thought it was really important for us to, rather than ask if people understood what we do, just let them know, this is what the board does, this is what our role is. And, you know, was this your understanding of the role of the board? Because I think, you know, I always get a, I think there's still a lot of questions about their, what is really the role of the board? And also just trying to understand if they're, they're finding the information that we're putting out there. We made an effort to have that trustee's page and are people going out there to work with it?
And have you heard from parents more recently that there's still a question about what is the board's role?
I, I, not necessarily hear it, I just hear questions. And to me, I think there needs to be clarity.
If I could just add that, we're certainly going to be talking about deep dive sessions we had, but it was clear that there needs to be greater clarity around board roles, governance versus administration or management. It's not clear to most people.
So...
So last month you were talking about outsourcing the survey function?
Yes. That brings me to my next handout. I was in the, I mean, I was printing, I did the family survey, I kind of updated it and I sent it to everyone and then I spent the time doing some research and trying to understand what was out there. So there's two tools that I found out there that I think would actually be very valuable. And I, you know, I, I sent out a note to the board to have the opportunity to go and explore what they are. It's the CSCI, School Climate Report, which it's a tool to actually look at, measure the school climate across parents, students, and faculty. So both of these tools do that and I think that was important. And then the other one was the Culture of Excellence and Ethics Assessment Survey. I actually really, I think I like this one a little bit better. Just in reading some of the measures, what does it measure? Is the school climate, "School climate is safe, whether faculty and staff are intentional and fosterate and academically rigorous and socially engaged environment students, whether students hold positive norms about learning and school behavior, whether students experience positive relationships with peers and staff, whether faculty and staff engage in supportive collegial relationships, and extent to which the school engages student families in supporting, in support of learning and social development." So, it's really, it measures parents' perceptions, student perceptions, and faculty perceptions, and then it looks at those linkages.
These are third-party standardized surveys that people can buy and they'll do all of the work for us and then provide results?
Provide a report.
And this would replace the current faculty, student, and family surveys?
I think that you can, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
No, I'll ask.
I think you might have to have specific questions that you might ask throughout the year or that you might need that are specific to AMSA. And we can, I think you can ask for some of those in these tools. But there might be, you know, five-question surveys. I really need to understand this. I don't think they're, they're going to replace everything. But in terms of understanding the school climate and what the board, I feel, needs to know, I think this does it.
Did you look at kind of sample questions?
I did look at some of the sample questions. It was whatever that holiday weekend was in October.
I looked at the sample questions when we sent this out. I thought the second one was much better than the first one. I mean, I feel really strongly, the first one was way too superficial. I was not going to address what we need, it's just too general. The second one dealt in, in a lot more detail to get at some of the issues.
And it was actually very recent.
I didn't look at pricing.
And does either of them come with any benchmarking? How large is the community of use and how, you know?
I, you know, the School Climate Report, the first one, my concern was I couldn't find a lot of client feedback on there. And that was the next step. I just haven't had an opportunity to really dive in deeper. At the end, there's other survey solutions, you know. You can go through the Society of HR Management. There's a company down in the South Shore, Discovery Surveys, they also do employee focus surveys. And then, then there was this one last one that was student-only. I was just trying to provide some information and then I think we need to identify, if we, if we want to go one of these routes, then you need to call and do a little bit more research. I just don't put extra step to collect.
Are you recommending that we think about trying to do these in the near term?
So, the Culture of Excellence and Ethics Assessment, they actually recommend that you don't do it in the fall when you start as a baseline, you do it in the spring as a baseline because of, I guess, the types of questions they're asking.
It feels like we should consider those as sort of part of the task force, you know, the series of recommendations they might be making, because we're going to dig into those a little bit more deeply. Is it your recommendation that we continue with the parent survey as-is, as amended in the short term now?
I think the, the parent survey that I put out with some of the questions, if no one else had any additional items that we wanted to look at or modifications to the questions, I think it still measures the level of satisfaction.
Yeah.
And it gives us something to compare from last year. But I do think that even if we do go at one of these services, it's going to take us some time to do the background work. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I put something out there that we were looking at. We did begin to talk about the student, the student survey at EdCommittee, I don't have all those notes.
Are you removing anything?
From...
Does this remove anything from the existing survey?
It did.
Add some stuff in?
Homework. I have, I have removed homework.
Okay.
Sorry. And just modified some of the questions.
Modified to the point where the answers are no longer comparable to the last year's?
Well, I think, you know, what I tried to do is I went in again and looked at some of the comments that people had. And I do have some open questions from the last survey. So, how do we handle parents with multiple children? I don't know how to do that with Survey Monkey. Because what happens is they have to answer the question once and they can have a very different experience across their, their children. So I'm not sure how to do that. And the other thing I had is, you know, do we break out the upper school and the lower school to understand that a little bit better, that dynamic? But the math/science question was something that has come up in the comments. So I thought, I actually think we should measure each department separately. It doesn't have to be just math and science, it should be every department. And it's the same idea that we, we want a parent to be able to, to measure each different experience. We also want them to be able to measure the experiences within the school. We haven't been able to give them the opportunity the way that the survey's written today.
And you're not asking them to fill it out twice, once for each kid?
We're probably asking them to fill it out twice. I don't know how you do that with Survey Monkey.
It should be hard.
Can it be optional so that parents can sort of do, if it's like a time constraint, you're like, oh my gosh, I have four kids, I do not want to fill out four surveys, I'll just do one aggregate?
Get rid of some of the kids.
Yeah, well, that's another option, believe me, I've considered it.
I think that's a good idea.
If you would like to fill one of these out for each child, then feel free.
Yep. And the only other aspect that we need to talk about is, in the past, it has been driven by the administration, they've kind of driven the Survey Monkey process. And do we want to take that on as a goal? To own the distribution of the surveys and the collection all to us?
Thank you.
I think it would be very dangerous for us to own because of public disclosure rules, that anything that we receive becomes public record. So, I, I think, if we're able to do an analysis, I mean, that's sort of the advantage of having a third party do the analysis, rolls up the data and gives it to us. If we become in charge of it, then I think a vast majority of the survey could be requested under public records law.
So if we do a third party, then the, the final analysis would become public record, but all of the individual responses would not?
Yes.
I don't think we have a liability for somebody's comments though.
But I just, it, it may either, it may create either a lot of work that we need to catalog and save forever, or it may limit people in their response, that they may respond differently.
So I would be comfortable, I'll just make a statement, in the board owning the survey and asking the administration to execute it and give us the results. I think the difference that we had last year is that the administration wanted to influence how it was administered in questions. And then we're unwilling to share some of the comments that came back. And I don't, I don't think we want to be in that position again. Because I think that hindered our ability to figure out what was going on last year. So, I, I would be comfortable, here's, here's the survey, administration, please get it out to the parents and give us the data when you get it back.
So one of the questions I would have, because I'm not sure, obviously, of all the details of what happened before in terms of being hesitant about sharing some information. Mine would be that if under the open comments section, anyone was making comments that were specifically identifying that could be considered personnel and therefore confidentiality infringement, that is not something that you would then want to, to make public for.
So if somebody says, I don't like teacher so-and-so?
Yes, yes. If something's specifically identifiable, I think that could get us into some legal concerns as well.
I think...
I mean, I think it's important, we can, we can, sorry, but we can accept that information.
Yes.
We can, we internally can look at it, we can be attentive to it as a concern. So it doesn't mean that you're not, you can give it the attention. But I think what I'm saying is, it means we may not then, it wouldn't be appropriate to give it back out or to respond. And sometimes, and I'm going to talk to you about this a little bit tonight, that sometimes the misinterpretation is because you didn't tell me what was going on, that, you know, you weren't dealing with it, right? So, we could get that information, but how we deal with it or whether we do or we don't would have to remain controversial.
Well, I think if somebody would mask all the names identified in the survey, we don't want those names, right?
I think that's the advantage of the administration doing the summation of the report, that then you provide a overall overview, sanitized of names and comments.
But the problem in the past, the fact that the administration was filtering survey data, that's the fundamental problem, right?
No, it was not the compiled survey data, we didn't get the comments.
It was the comments that were specifically provided.
But this is not for the family survey.
But what you're proposing is still the same thing, isn't it? If you get redacted or if you get...
But you, I mean, I don't know how you could get, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm sorry.
So, this may be, this may help, I don't know. Is it one thing that we could do is have the administration administer the survey? If there are any redactions that they create, they can then describe them to us. And we could also make, we could also receive comments directly from the survey population if we make it clear that there's no expectation of confidentiality. So if somebody, the other concern that I would, the concern that I would have because of complaints that we heard during the climate assessment is that if somebody, if a parent or a teacher wants us to know something and administration's withholding that because it identifies somebody by name, you know?
There's other mechanisms for that.
Yeah, I'm trying to think.
I have to say, so, because I read all of the comments last year, the year before, the year before, or the last three surveys we did. And the only concern I would have is that some parents, actually, it's, it is naming teachers, it is naming teachers, but some of the comments are very personal to their student. And even if, you know, even though it is...
I would, I would not watch.
That's my concern. It's, how do you make, how do you remind parents that, you know, you want to kind of keep it so that you're not identifying yourself, your student, you know, it's hard.
If parents have a concern for their student, the survey is not place. The place is to go knock on the principal's door and work with the administration to resolve student issues. It's much more correct.
So Chris, could I just get a point of clarification? When you were suggesting that, you know, we create the survey or whatever, we, at a high level are responsible for the survey, but admin then starts sending it out and this and that, is that in the context of this next survey? Or is it kind of long-term?
This next one.
Just this next one?
Yeah. If we want to involve a third party with a different survey or this survey, you know, in a more anonymized fashion, I think that's fine. But what we agreed last board is we want to move forward with the survey quickly.
Yeah.
Because we want the data. And that, it's as good as we have right now. We just don't want it to be handicapped by withholding comments.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure it's just the short term.
Is there an option to, oh, I'm sorry, Chris?
So, Tommy, you said that there are other avenues. So I, I'm concerned about, we got the complaint that people want to have unmediated contact with the board.
That's, that's not appropriate to have unmediated contact with the board. I mean, if we have a governance issue that we need to clearly articulate to the community, that's not our role. There are avenues inside school to address these things. There are such things, public comment to address these things, there's complaint process to address these things. But there is not unfettered access to the board anytime somebody wants to talk about something, that's not our role.
Okay, then I think we'd be looking for a middle ground.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think when we get to discussion around the feedback we received during the two deep dive sessions, I think it'll, I think we, we can maybe talk about that specific issue there.
Okay, oh, hang on.
Okay.
Can I have a middle ground? We can, we can submit the survey and close the open com. We're going to have another survey, you know, if our intention is to have another survey in the spring, we, I'm not sure what's going to come out of the climate survey implementation task force. There might be other ways that we can get some of that communication. But the survey last fall went out and it didn't have any open comments. And you know, I, I did get feedback that there was no open comments, but I think we can say, if we're trying to measure the same quantitative measures, then we can send it out without that comments section and we can fulfill what we were trying to do by sending this out now, simply, we determined to go further with affirmative.
Can I make another suggestion? I think that in the current climate, that to say, we can solve the problem of not wanting to hear the comments by not soliciting the comments is maybe not the best way. But if we, if, if we have a task force that looks at it, in other words, we can have confidentiality in a task force, right? Because that's not the whole board, right? Like, we haven't had to make public all of the ED search stuff. So if there was a task force that was, that we knew that the task force got that raw data, that that can be the middle ground or the filter between the board?
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I understand that this is a very tricky situation because of the previous experience. But anything by which the board begins to accept things that are related to personnel concerns, you are now, everybody is now going into a compromised area because it is confidential. So, the, I'm sorry, the executive director, that person's evaluation is public, their performance is public, whether or not they're doing their job, that's public. That's what happens when you step into that role. Every other person in the district, all, all of those other employees, that is the responsibility of the executive director and not the board. And in fact, having, having the board weigh in on any personnel matters other than that of the executive director would be a violation of confidentiality. So, the, I understand there was a previous problem, but what we now need to do is put a mechanism in place. So if there are personnel issues, they should go to the principal from, you know, up the chain, right? And the buck stops with the executive director. If things are not being resolved with the executive director, then what folks have an issue with is the executive director. Do you know what I mean by jumping? But that's really what the issue becomes with it. It does not become still with the teacher or those other people. And then you can bring that concern about maybe the lack of response or whatever on the part of the executive director to the board's attention. But the board does not have the authority to function and oversee personnel matters. That's what the, the role of the executive director, principal is on. So that's where this becomes very complicated because it's very understandable where folks are coming from. But that's why I think it's important, and I agree you mentioned earlier, that, you know, maybe just right up here in black and white, what are the roles of the board? What are they legally able to do and not do? Are they able to legally address and not address? And the same for the executive director. And so you can still have a mechanism, but anything where you're having this open comment come directly to the board, where there's an opportunity for, for people to be talking about things that are not appropriate to go to them, I think then legally we could really be stepping in it and not really have much of a leg to stand on.
So I think we should have the open, open comments section and let the school filter what comes to us based on that criteria. If we have a concern...
Yeah, and we got, we took it out of one survey last year, so we didn't accept...
Well, I just didn't, it actually, it was a miss.
It was a miss, but I think, I think we need to be able to get the comments, but just mask our names.
The other option, if I may, is, is what just happened, right? So you can have the third party, but that, the third party's doing the same thing that administration would do, except if administration's doing it, I recognize that there's a trust issue. And although you should all trust me, I recognize that you'd, no, and I, it's okay. But, but if the third party's doing it, right, then I think that that, that concern of trust goes out and the third party will in fact ensure that none of the information that is shared can anyway identify and go back to a particular individual. So you can't say, you know, it's a department of whatever, well, there's only one person who's running that department, or a particular teacher who teaches a subject and there's only one person who teaches that course, right? So I think that is one way, so that any identifiable information can be removed, the information could be shared, it would have that unfiltered component, but it would not be done by the administration.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that, but I, I think the idea that, I, I think that people need to know that, that, that if they're going to take the time to fill out these surveys, that they need to know that somebody is listening to what they put in that survey. I think we have learned that, that fundamentally is what went wrong and we can't continue to make that mistake.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we, this isn't really supposed to be part of Melissa's update. No, no, I, I'm just, because we all started talking about it, but I think that we would better address this in part of the greater whole after the climate discussion and we go through that, because there may be other mechanisms.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay, so let's dispose of the survey question then.
But I was hoping that we hold it until...
So we table it until after the...
I wasn't sure where to share it. And the only thing that I wanted to know, and I think everybody has a copy, I received an email from AMSA Communities, I guess it was, with questions for Dr. Demello, and I distributed that to her and to the board.
This was a... Do we need to talk about this a little bit, Melissa?
The one thing I would say is, I did, I did look at some of the questions. I do think that some of the answers are addressed or will be addressed based on what we're talking about today.
So this was a list of anonymous questions that was coming to the board or the ED from the blog, I will say. Is that from the blog or...
It was, it was posted on the blog.
Yeah.
And people were able to add questions.
Just write in any questions they have, yeah. I would encourage people to ask the ED if they have questions. We don't allow anonymous public comment at the board meeting, because you can't, you got to be here and ask the question. But the best way to get a question answered about the direction of the school is to knock on this lady's door. So, I don't know how to get that message out, but that's how real communication happens.
I don't know either.
You get context of the question, you get nuance, you get, you know, an ability to understand what's going on. So, we can provide those questions to the ED and I think she can do whatever she would like to do with them. But I would advise all parents and stakeholders, when they have questions, to ask them to the ED.
If I may add, we will be announcing our upcoming parent coffees that are going out, the department chairs are going to be going, and also be having some ones where people can meet with me again, with just me and no other administrators or anything around. And so, it'll be coming.
All right. Okay, so we can move on to the faculty representative.
So, I'm sorry, just before that, I know we're moving the survey section later, but just two things specifically on the survey questions. One was, you mentioned taking homework off of it.
I might put it back on.
I think, just, I quickly answer these questions and I think it may be relevant.
Yep.
And then the second one was, I don't know, I looked through this too quickly, but is there anything around, and I've heard it talked about in some of the meetings, around student stress and stress levels?
Not in here. I know the, the student survey, we do focus a lot on understanding their stress level. That was something that, you know, we really took the time... That was something that, you know, we really took the time to understand last year, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have probably printed out the ed committee meeting minutes, because we kind of outlined our objectives for that survey. I'll try to find it on my phone and when we get to ed committee, I'll talk through some of those, stress level, and what we talked about is maybe breaking it out as a separate survey.
Okay.
So when we talk, when we have the ed committee update, I'll kind of talk through that.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Bullock.
All right. So I just kind of, my report's a little bit longer this month. I think it was a little bit of a tougher month for teachers. We sort of had the first month and I think it was a little bit of a honeymoon period and teachers really were open to new change and making things better. And some things have happened since the last board meeting that I think have, have sort of changed that for, for some teachers. I just want to say at the start that I view my role as some, a way for you to hear the voice of the faculty, so some of the things I'm going to say are things that I have heard from my colleagues or things that they've come to me and wanted me to pass on, but aren't necessarily the way I personally feel. And that some of that also might be covered later in the third-party stuff. So as I said, I think it was a little bit more difficult month for teachers. I think that there was a lot of things in the last month that sort of reminded us of the past. And in the first month of school, we didn't really have a lot of that. The first thing I think that happened, maybe not in any order actually, is that one of our colleagues is no longer working at this school. And that sort of brought up a lot of, a lot of feelings for teachers. There are confidentiality issues around that, we understand that, but we think that, that we should not find out about this from students. There was no general announcement that went out to the faculty that said this person no longer works here. We don't know if it is that person's choice or the school's choice, when something like that happens and we don't have official information, the only thing we have to substitute is rumors. I do want to let everybody know that that teacher has been put in touch with the appropriate union reps, and if there is an issue that that teacher and the union want to take up, they, the parties know what to do. So I do sort of want to reassure people of that. So that was one issue, that sort of hit people a little bit hard. The, at the last meeting, one of our former colleagues requested the release of the, of the public salary information. That was made, and we want to thank Dr. DeMello for doing that actually fairly quickly. A lot of teachers were relieved to see that it was information that I think a lot of us felt needed to be out there. That being said, once it was out there, there's a lot of bad feelings in seeing four years' worth of, of data. There was a lot of suspicions that were confirmed, a lot of things that we saw, that, that people saw as salary increases not based on years of experience or, or performance, but rather on loyalties. There was also a sense that, that possibly there was discrimination towards female employees and/or towards immigrant employees, and that people who voiced strong opinions, it was clearly recognized, it was clearly, you could see that in the salaries. There were, seemed to be no pattern for these salaries of the past. It was not based on years of service or degrees held or things like that. That is frustrating to people. What was also frustrating is people were specifically told in certain years, there is no money available in the budget this year for raises for anyone. That was clearly not true because other people did get raises in those years, so there were some untruths being told there. We do recognize that salary is now in the hands of the negotiators and that will be worked out for the future, and that there's probably very little that can be done, but there is a sort of sense among some teachers that there should be a way to right past Also, you know, the climate report was released and we had a deep dive, dive down, what are we calling that?
Deep dive.
Deep dive session with the faculty. For a lot of faculty members, I heard that it was, it was a relief to kind of see that in black and white and to see that their experience of what they went through was not something that they were the only one or just a minority of people. I think that that was sort of something that people got told a lot last year, you're the only one, it's only a few of you, and to kind of see it in black and white and to see that that experience was broadly shared was both validating, but also it was, it was emotional to kind of have a lot of that stuff brought back up. A lot of the teachers that I've talked to say that they feel like their experience last year has not really been acknowledged, that there's been a lot of, okay, let's move on from that now, and that a lot of teachers, these, these wounds are still very raw for a lot of us, the pain is still very real, and I think that there needs to be official recognition either from the board or from administration about that fact before we can begin to heal and move on. I think there'll probably be more about that in the, in the task force report. We did hear from the principal search committee, the three finalists were announced, and faculty members did appreciate that they were invited to meet with the candidates. We don't remember ever that happening before, so that was a positive. There were several faculty members on the sta, on the search committee, and those that I talked to said that the process had integrity, that they, they worked very hard, they spent a lot of hours on that, they had a set of qualifications, of minimum qualifications that they were looking for, that every single one of the final candidates that they recommended met those, met those qualifications, and, and that they felt that they brought forth three final candidates that they were pleased with and that, and that they thought the process had integrity. For people who were not on the principal committee, there was, some people felt that the candidates were a little underwhelming, and the presence of an inside candidate was upsetting for a lot of people. Although, and I don't know if that person's here, forgive me, a lot of people said they really, really like Mr. McIntyre, that's obviously who we're talking about, but are just not sure that, that they're comfortable with him moving into a principal role, and that might not be my place to say, as always. Another thing that teachers have been a little bothered by is that they, there's a lot more stories in the last month of teachers being called on the carpet in, in the old way, called in one-on-one, they felt scolded, they felt like they've been called to task on policies that are either not well-known or not known at all, or they're not in writing, and they're, they're frustrated that, that they, that we're being, that they're being treated in such a way. If there's a policy that needs to be better enforced or better adhered to, some kind of general thing such as, you know, just a reminder, you're not supposed to do this, please make sure that that's what's happening, rather than, you know, calling people in, scolding them.
Is there, is there a concern that the policies are not documented?
Several people, and I don't want to say any more specifics without violating sort of confidentiality, but several people said, I didn't even know that was a rule, did you know that was a rule? I didn't know that was a rule, that kind of thing.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When the employee manuals, the two manuals that you get, did you receive a cover with the changes?
We did.
All right, just following up what we talked about.
Yes. Some teachers report feeling frustrated with the board itself. The response from the board that they didn't know what was going on last year hit a lot of faculty members, left them with a bad taste in their mouth, because we received an email from the board saying that the board was exactly aware of what was going on and that we should all quiet down. So when the board came back and said, well, we're really sorry, we didn't know what was going on, that, it seemed a little bit hypocritical to people, and there was a sense that the board has not taken enough responsibility. However, many of the teachers that I talked to were very pleased with the meeting that they had with Rick and found that they felt like that was positive. There's a sense that sometimes decisions are still being made quickly without input from, from, from teachers and that are not communicated timely or well, that people talk about transparency, but we're still not seeing it, and that many teachers remain skeptical, insecure, and uncertain.
All right. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. I think we're going to talk about some of these things in a little while, so I don't know if it'll be addressed right now. So let's move on to the executive director update. We're then going to go into chair business and then after that, we'll go into the task force debrief on the break.
So our agenda this evening for the executive director segment will be having a presentation from Intel, which was a fantastic visit to our district last week, student board of directors proposal, we'll talk a bit about confidentiality, principal selection committee, an update for that, also an update on the charter renewal process. We'll have a presentation, a little bit deeper dive than the previous on MCAS results, and also be touching on AP there as well, I believe, and, and finally, just a couple of blurbs on facilities. So with that, I'd like to invite Maureen Evans and our guests from Intel and our students. I'm going to let Mrs. Evans.
I'm Maureen Evans and my position at AMSA is marketing and outreach. And in early, early September, I received an inquiry from a parent asking AMSA if we had any projects where a team could come in from Intel and support AMSA through their community volunteer effort. He said they had done things like painting, cleaning office chairs, cleaning equipment, that even built a deck as one of their projects. And I thought, hmm, nice projects, but Intel, the largest semiconductor chip maker in the world. Fortunately, the discussion led us to Rachel Joseph Tepperman, who could not be here today. She is the community engagement specialist at Intel, and she in turn led us to Araceli Enes, who is the product debug engineer at Intel. Together, the two of them offered to come into AMSA and provide a workshop for one of our sixth grade classes. After getting approval from Dr. Jurey and Dr. DeMello to invite these women in to meet with me and Denise Stanley, a computer science teacher in the sixth grade, Rachel and Araceli graciously agreed to go above and beyond their call of duty, and they brought an entire team of 20 engineers in for an entire day to offer the workshop for the entire sixth grade class of 140 students. So with that, I will let Araceli tell you a little bit and give you an overview of what the project was, and then some of the students will tell you about the experience they had.
Great. So hi, guys, my name's Araceli. So along with my engineering duties, I also am the project manager for Start Making, an educational initiative that Intel is trying to proliferate to a local community.
Is it part of the maker movement?
Yes, it's definitely part of the maker movement. So if you're unfamiliar with the maker movement, it is sort of a technology subculture of adults and children alike who basically use technology to invent in their homes. So it's very much like a trial and error sort of learning that we really want to bring to schools through our program. And before I go deeper into that program, I wanted to touch on the Intel involved volunteering program that we have. So Intel loves to get involved with our local communities at any sort of level, just like Maureen said, it was building decks and painting, but we also do technology projects as well with students. So for every volunteer hour that Intel donates, well, not donates, but does at an organization, a nonprofit organization, Intel donates $10 for that volunteer hour. So actually, with this project that we did at AMSA, we did 74.5 volunteer hours with all of our employees, which in turn raised about seven, or sorry, I can't do math, I'm an engineer, $740.50 for AMSA. So Intel will be donating that money by the end of the year for the school.
Value on the experience the kids had and the, the hours the engineers put into it, but.
It was a lot of fun. I'll get into that now. So the project that we did with the students is one of two projects that we do in the Start Making program. And this one is for sixth grade students specifically, trying to touch on hardware and software concepts and how they relate with each other. And luckily, we had a very, very smooth pilot process, which is, this pilot was actually our first one in a classroom setting, which was great. And it went as smoothly as any pilot could go, thanks to the exposure the students had to binary and just basic computer concepts. So that was very helpful at the sixth grade level. And basically, yeah, so that's the quick overview. If you guys don't have any questions, we'll go into their comments on how they thought the project.
So my name is Noe and I really liked using the Galileo board to make the seven segment say hello.
My name is Evan and I liked how, that you have to be so specific to computers and, and they're not like us and they don't interpret logic, so you had to be specific and you had to, when we're using the Galileo board, we had to put the pins in the exact right spot or, or the whole thing wouldn't work. So I liked how that it was kind of like building blocks to come up to say hello, which was the final project.
My name is Cordelia and my favorite part of working with Intel was that, instead of working with the hardware that I was used to, like with snap circuit boards and stuff, I got to work with the software, which was a little more confusing, but it was a lot of fun because it was learning something new.
You guys rock.
Basically, we wanted to thank Rachel and Araceli and the engineers who came in, but I also wanted to thank Stephen Lloyd, who is the parent who kind of initiated and got the ball rolling here. And do we have the, oh, okay, we have a sixth grade student, Eva Calicchio, who created a little pictorial of the day, so we wanted to share that as well.
That's the right music.
Yeah, was it the right music? Maybe you need somebody from Intel to help you.
You have to one of the kids.
Yeah.
There it is.
This is good.
This is sweet.
Will you guys come back?
Absolutely, if you'll have us.
I want to thank Rachel and the, and the team at Intel. You know, going around the room that day and talking to the engineers that were there, any one of them would have jumped to come here tonight. In fact, I'm surprised we didn't have a few more, because I know when talking to them, they were like lined up, ready to go. I also want to thank Maureen Evans because she's been so excited and passionate about doing this and making this happen and using this as a, as a model for making other types of similar partnerships with the community. So thank you very much, Maureen. Appreciate it. Next up, somebody's, it's, it's just a title slide, we bet you don't, we only gave you about eight PowerPoints tonight. Next, I'd like to invite to the table Zan Sheikh, Joe Palmieri, and Elijah Sufiarish.
No. Sufiarish.
Why did you say it?
Seth Yarash.
Seth Yarash.
Seth Yarash. I like the effort though.
I was trying to say it so quickly so it acted as like a quote. But they have a fantastic proposal that they're going to bring to your attention tonight, so you're on, Zan.
All right. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for having us tonight. Hope you liked the ambiance tonight. But, so really, what the student board initiative is, is it's an organization that me and Joey and Elijah and I came up with to really allow for students to communicate and work in tandem with the board of trustees to improve the to improve the educational standard here at AMSA. So, without further ado, all right, so who we are. We're a group of young men and women who believe in taking control of our education. We believe we're pioneering a path to student influence education here at AMSA. And we think our idea is pretty unique because I've never seen any of the other students have anything like this. So, being seniors here, we've grown up in these halls. We know AMSA in a way that's a very intimate manner and I feel as if, as students at AMSA, we have, like Joey said, a very unique set of beliefs that we like to bring to the table here. I know that there was a point where we had a student rep to the board and we want to kind of bring some sort of semblance of that back here to the Board of Trustees and allow for students to have a voice and influence, be able to notify the Board of Trustees how they're doing, how they feel the school is running, and be able to improve AMSA in a way that hopefully has never seen, been seen before and be able to improve AMSA in a very great manner, so... We feel like since the school has given us so much in the way of preparation for so many things, it's a really good curriculum, it's all, it's college prep. We just feel like it's almost our duty to give back to it and not only that, but also the other students that will come after us. So, what exactly is our mission? It is to empower high school students, create leaders, give ourselves a voice, and improve the educational standard here at AMSA. So, what exactly is the student board? It's a platform that allows students to work in tandem with the Board of Trustees, that allows for student input with the board. It also enables for improvements to be made based on student input. It's basically a more direct link between the students and the board, people who are actually running the school. So, why? Students here at AMSA and really all over the country feel as if they don't have a platform in which they can make an impact on their school. And this student board would allow for students to take charge of their education and enhance the educational standard and the educational environment. AMSA has always been and will be a pioneer in a new breed of active and ever improving education. And not only that, it boosts self-confidence within the students to create an actively participating and growing student. We are the future of the world. And if we aren't confident, if we don't believe in ourselves and think that we can make a difference, then what is our future? We notice that students certainly feel a lot more involved with their school if they actually have more of a say in what's going on. We've noticed this in years past where different voting techniques such as surveys and others such ways to hear opinions of students. The students really feel like they have an impact on what the school's decisions are. So, how do we achieve this? Creating a platform in which students meet and can provide their opinion and convictions to allow for students to take control of their education. Two representatives will attend Board of Trustee meetings and will relay the information at the student board meetings. I mean, kind of, so the issues and ideas that have been brought up in the Board of Trustee meetings, we bring back to the students, talk about them all over certain verdicts and votes. And then afterwards, students will discuss the proceedings in some place at the Board of Trustees and then we get back to you guys. Although we currently have a system in place for student government, which is very important, they don't really work with the Board of Trustees as we hope to. They're more for student affairs, as you would call them, like dances, prom, things that... Colours. Yes, colours, of course. In this, again, we'll meet in the after-school club and any student may attend, which reflects our spirit of inclusivity. And all of them will get an equal voice in the proceedings as students. And so, really, our end goals are to, first and foremost, empower students, to enhance the educational experience here at AMSA, create leaders, and foster a love of learning and higher education, create productive members of society, and to secure a spot on the board and to be able to facilitate the input from the student body because that is paramount. And any comments, questions, and concerns?
So, let me just make sure I understand your... An after-school program that invites all students from the school?
Any student, well, really in the upper school, anywhere from ninth to 12th grade.
Okay.
And any student that has any concerns about what's going on in the school, if they have no idea what the Board of Trustees is, hopefully we can shed light on what you guys do, be able to really just have a vote, think about and learn about what the school is doing and be able to improve and get their two cents in. Because I was actually in a much different outfit today because it's superhero day. So, I changed into this and I got asked multiple times by kids in my grade, why I'm dressed like this? And I said, oh, because I'm attending a Board of Trustees meeting. And some of them didn't even know what the Board of Trustees was.
And these are seniors.
Yes, these are seniors. They've been here since sixth grade. And I just, I view it as a problem that they don't know what the student, or what the Board of Trustees is. So, with the student board, we hope to alleviate that problem because it almost reflects that these students that don't know what the board is feel obviously distant. And even the students who do know what the board is, they also feel distant as well. So, we hope to alleviate that.
When you say that you would, your hope is to have two students attend board meetings, would that be, would it be the same two like for a year? Or would it be just like at your meeting, you'd be like, okay, you two are going to go to the board meeting this week?
Well, it would be the same two students for the year, namely Joey and I.
Oh, wait, now my vote is different.
Really because we're going to be as dedicated as possible. And we're going to be here every single Board of Trustee meeting, be there at every student board meeting, make sure that every single idea, that every single concern, question is voiced. Because, I mean, I know that the student rep to the board was in existence before it was in place, but really, a student, one student can voice the opinion of so many students, so many other people. So, with this, we would have students who are providing information, but also with backing, with students, with a voice, with empirical data.
And how would you govern the meetings that you'll have that kind of feed issues, surface questions?
Right. So, we originally thought of it to kind of emulate how a board would work, but really more like a forum. So, there would be a chair, vice-chair, and secretary. And we would just ask for students to come down. We already have a Facebook group. We've reached out. We have around 40, 50 students who are already really, really interested in getting involved. And so, what we would have is students would come on down. We introduce ideas and the issues and arguments that have been voiced in the Board of Trustee meetings and we'd ask for solutions, how you feel about what's going on. Come to a verdict and then we'd have a vote. And then, based on majority rule, we'd go off of what people kind of came to consensus with.
So, I have a question for the existing board, but first, I just kudos guys. Great leadership of coming up here and talking and bringing this up. Really, really admirable. What happened, I've only been with the BOT so long. What happened with the previous student rep type position? Did it...
They graduated.
Formerly, how were they kind of elected or appointed or...
I believe that it was always a senior and the senior class voted for that person. And I think there were two different people that I remember doing it.
Was it by recommendation?
Yeah, I think...
It was appointed by the executive director because my son served on it for three years as the student rep.
The second one was a recommendation, I think, by the rep, right?
What actually happened is we asked the students in the senior class who would like to be the representative, and it could not be somebody who was already on student government. So, got somebody else involved. Anybody who wanted to apply, they wrote a little letter of intent and then they won on a ballot and we let all the seniors vote for who they wanted to represent them and that person became the rep.
Is we really about that? Could we also add an abstract? I think it's a great way to bubble up representation. You will probably find that the vast majority of board business is somewhat boring. Administrative things and governance. And I think you certainly, you know, the team could learn a lot about governance and probably help board members and parents and faculty all learn about governance as well because it's different than operations. So, you know, things like if students don't like the flavor of soda in the drink machines, that's an operational question versus a governance issue. And that, you know, that's something that we struggle with to try to make sure we stay out of operational issues. So, I think you would probably want to think about what you're interested in doing from a, you know, define governance versus operations to make sure that things that you would be bringing to the board would be more governance-oriented issues than operational issues.
Okay, yeah. I think definitely like in the beginning, when this idea kind of came about, we thought of, you know, what is the Board of Trustees capacity? What can they do and what can they not? And what we would be interacting with. And I believe that governance as a whole, that the students don't really have an impact on governance right now. I don't think that they're really communicating with the Board of Trustees, at least in a very broad fashion. So, I think that where we're at right now and where, how we would be working with governance and learning about what the Board of Trustees does and kind of bringing that back to the students and talking about how we're going to get our input in. I think that if we're going in this direction, I think we've chosen the right path because operations-wise, does the student, does student government work with operations at all? Do they work in that kind of capacity or...
From hearing what your presentation, I think the school council might be a great place for student representation. But obviously, I mean, these are public meetings and I think you guys come and we want to hear what the students have to say. And maybe as part of, you know, is there a public comment? Or do we leave a section that they would share that? I think we talked about this two meetings ago or last meeting I mentioned it and I still think like student government, who has been voted in by their classes, that is also a representation, so we need to balance that.
So, if I could just come on your comment. So, just a couple of things. So, one is, I think the notion though of, I guess I'll ask the question again. So, we used to have a student rep on the BOT. I would question, why don't we still? This seems like an extension of that, but plus some... Where you also have a, if I understand correctly, a forum outside of this meeting where you have interaction with other students.
Exactly. So, we're taking a position on the board.
Yep.
But we're also backing up what we're saying with what the student body wants.
Yep, yep.
So, it's not just one person going, I want this to happen. I'm entirely sure that the student representative last year had any really structured way to get input from other students. I could be wrong on that, but I just...
I think that's the key difference is you're proposing a structured way for the students to organize around representation.
Exactly.
I think it's a great idea. I'm concerned that you said that we're running the school because we are not running the school.
Right, no.
There's that difference between, and that's, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea for a broader student population to learn about what the role of the board is and to serve as a communication vehicle.
I think to Melissa's point though, I think that, you know, maybe as a pilot exercise.
Yeah, exactly. The pilot exercise, I think, would be very interesting.
Maybe be opposed to, in any way be opposed to that. And, you know, at the next meeting, I'd suggest to show up after having gathered your information and sign up for public comment and share that. And we can evaluate the quality of that feedback and decide whether we want to go back to having a position on the Board of Trustees.
Was the student rep to the board ever a voting member?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
There was, there's a history on it. I think...
We can't by law.
Right, we can't by law. I think initial student rep, wait, maybe five years ago, actually was considered an ex-official member, but the latest incarnation was just considered a liaison to the board, did not have any board role. And I think that's the guidance that we're getting from the state as well, that that's an appropriate vehicle for a student to represent their...
I was just going to say, one of the things I like about their proposal is we do have student government in place, but to me, student government is really designed to bring operational types of matters to the attention of the principal primarily. And I think that the benefit of having a council like this or a board like this is that students now can have the experience, the leadership type of experience, which is something we're building on a lot, right? The leadership type of experience to come and see not a management side, but the business side of things.
Definitely.
And so, when we're talking, for example, about, you know, financial kinds of things and big picture budget types of things, I think having a student voice about those kinds of things or as we go into strategic planning process, right? And, you know, we want the student voice, well, that would be a great opportunity for students to come and sit at the table and be able to provide that kind of input. So, I see it as different than student government and I think it would be something great to have a go at and see how it works.
I like your suggestion, Tom, but I don't, I think we ought to sit on the idea where we're... It's a change. We got to make sure we understand how it fits into the bylaws. But I would, I think it's a great idea to come back and present, you know, kind of initial round of things that you've gathered and thought through with other students. We'll have you sign up in public comment and we can make it a little bit of a dialogue. And then I think we'll be prepared to make sure that we have room for it sort of structurally and there's no prohibitions against it sort of thing. So, I think it's a great add. Let's sort of get started in an informal way. And then figure out how we can go from there.
May I have a please?
Sure.
If they don't mind, in the meantime, because I also recognize you're in your senior year and so one month notice and then another month now, you folks have lost two, right? So, in the meantime, right, if you're having these meetings, I am more than welcome to meet with the reps so that we can also bounce ideas and see how things could move forward or so that you at least have a mechanism for having that additional voice come on. It's not at the principal level, but that has a little bit of a different level so we can work the fines and balance there too.
If you want me, I would be willing to do that too.
Yes.
Because I'm around, you know, just because I'm around and I see Zan every day.
Thank you all for your time. I think, thank you so much. Thank you for yours. Thank you. Do you have an abstract? You guys want to, you want to pass around now or... All right, thank you.
The next topic on the executive director's report is just to have a moment to talk a bit about confidentiality. I hope to, that hearing some of this will help to give folks a greater understanding of some of the decisions that have been made and why we have to stand by those. So, I've received some questions regarding confidentiality recently with respect to students, staff, and parents. Some folks suggested it would be helpful, again, for me to explain some basic protocols and steps that we take to ensure that confidentiality is maintained and that all people are treated respectfully. So, please know that exchanges between administration and students and parents or between administration and other employees is considered privileged and confidential in accordance with various statutes and regulations. When working with students and parents, information related to academics, behavior, family matters, discipline, health, and others will be kept confidential to the extent possible. Individuals within the school will be informed strictly on a need-to-know basis. Similarly, with respect to employees, personnel matters or any change in a person's employment status is considered private, whether related to the acceptance of another job, relocation, disciplinary action, personal or family health matters, financial matters, job advancement opportunities, career changes or other. Each situation will be treated in a confidential manner respecting the privacy of individuals and any information shared will be limited to the wishes of that person. Sometimes folks make the assumption that if someone gets a job advancement somewhere that you can just share that freely as well. It's still a personal decision. It would be respected unless the person says, yes, and you can tell people that I'm moving on to such and such. I want to make those clarifications about confidentiality and respecting someone's privacy. In instances where students may be impacted by personnel changes, notifications will be limited to the parents and guardians of impacted students because again, otherwise you're risking sharing information additionally that's not nearly your place. It needs to be on a needs-to-know basis. Recently, some folks had requested a list of individuals who had been at AMSA last year but were no longer working at AMSA and wanted to know the reasons why they had left. Although expressing concern or interest for those no longer AMSA is completely understandable, individual decisions and situations are confidential. And so, we will continue to respect legal and professional privacy guidelines. respect legal and professional privacy guidelines. However, it was also requested that new employees to AMSA be introduced to the community, and this we can and should do. In fact, it's already been in the works, Maureen Evans and her students have already been working on this, writing overviews to introduce our newest educators. And so in November, our website will have a page featuring our new staff. So I hope this provides some clarification for folks.
It's a very difficult issue. I think it's, you find this in corporate America too, that unfortunately, when people leave an organization, it's very quiet, you don't hear much about it, and it's due to confidentially law. And if you don't respect that, you're in violation of the law and your, so you could be in trouble with the state, but you could also be subject to civil suit. So I know it's a very difficult balance, and when a colleague leaves, under whatever circumstances, it's difficult, people miss that colleague, so, but they want to know why, but I understand the administration's need to remain silent on that unless, you know, unless that colleague has said, yeah, please let people know that this is why I'm here.
Is it the law that you can't even announce that someone no longer is working here?
It is highly recommended by a legal counsel that things like that are just not addressed, because again, some people don't want attention drawn, and it's hard because people have a concern, but again, it goes back to that need-to-know. It's kind of like, simple thing is, you know, some people, when they retire, they're okay with the party, and others don't even want anyone to know, they just want to go silently. Those are personal decisions that people make, and we have to respect them. And again, I really understand the frustration of people, but it's our job to respect the privacy of every individual regardless of the circumstance. And so, you know, I will, you know, give everybody that kind of integrity and level of privacy confidentiality.
That's fair, I can respect that.
Sure. So principal search process, I just wanted to bring folks up to date, and also kind of give a reminder, we went through this a couple weeks ago, but I'd like to reiterate with you folks. So what has happened is, when I came on board, we were just finishing up, and we had not found, had a finalist to move forward from our first kind of go-at thing, so we, the position was reopened and the process was redefined. So all previous applicants were offered the opportunity to remain active in the candidate pool, job description was rewritten, and it was reposted. We had an advertised application deadline, we did this on purpose because before it had been open, and we felt that by giving a tight timeline, people were interested, were willing to apply, and we didn't have this kind of open feel to it. There was a screening process to go through the paper cut, resumes and interviews were conducted using rubrics. There were new sets of questions, different from the initial set, and the questions were specifically geared towards getting at specific areas of a principalship, including the four key standards that are in the school administration evaluation rubrics. And again, we did everything possible to make it a very confidential process. The screening committee then brought forward three candidates as finalists. Those three candidates were now in the process of going through the site visits, we finished two of those, we have one more to conduct. During the site visits, the candidates are brought on tours of the buildings, and they also have a chance to meet with various stakeholders, and those stakeholders include meeting with other administrators, with our support personnel around the building, with teachers, with student representatives, and with parents. And we provided feedback, excuse me, feedback opportunities for those who were able to attend the, you know, the kind of meet and greets or the interviews. So that's sort of where we are, once we have the last candidate next week, and actually it's already started, references are being checked, and as well, all of the feedbacks forms will be carefully reviewed. The anticipated announcement of the principal is Monday, November 3rd. I just want to say to folks, it could come earlier or it could come later. Once you make a decision about who you want to offer the job to, you need to have some preliminary conversations to make sure that the salary is going to work out, that there's a contract that will be able to be worked out, and then you want to, can make your announcement. So, you know, again, keep in mind that that's a little bit of a flexible, flexible nature.
Do you have, or what is your plan B if you don't feel that any of the finalists-
Right back to working. I would then probably do, maybe consider some different approaches about particular outreach and aggressive, you know, things that have a little bit of a different approach and personalized recruitment. And then if that were to occur, once some people were recruited to, maybe recruited to actually do some interviews. And so that would be something I think, but I would need to give it some more thought, because I'm feeling, you know, I want to give it, but I said this from the beginning, I'll say it again, if I do not feel that the fit is right, and I'm saying I, because it is my decision by the nature of my job-
And by the law.
But, yes, but again, you know, I'm not making that based on only my observations, I'm considering all of the different factors that I've mentioned, and give a lot of weight to the in-depth background reference checks and so on that I do of references that were provided by the candidates, and the resume component, written letter reference, additional names that are provided to me for reference, and personal connections for representation of my own channel. So I will make that a very thorough process, because that, at least, you help to filter out the quality, and then anytime, any, there's a hire, right, you know, you're looking for the fit as well, and they're looking to fit as well. So those are the things that I'll be looking at, and, but I would not hesitate to, if I don't feel what's good to do with that. And so then, the projected starting date, again, it's projected, it can't be set in stone, because everybody's individual contracts are read differently depending on where they are, what their situation is, so, but hopefully, we could have somebody starting by January 3rd. And so, there's our principal search update. Next.
Well done.
Thank you. And, you know, I would like to thank the committee members involved, you know, it's very hard for them, and I also know it's hard for some folks, because after they, you know, they've interviewed people, I was supposed to say they, excuse me, not interviewed, but emailed, please know that any member who served on that committee cannot be responding to folks, so I don't want others to feel like they're just being ignored again, but there are very tight protocols, they all signed, you know, confidentiality agreements as part of the, I probably should mention that, they all were given confidentiality statements that they needed to sign, and so, you know, they cannot respond if you're trying to reach out to them for information, okay? Next up, the charter renewal update, and I'd like to thank Sarah Snow in advance for helping out to put this together. The renewal inspection site visit update, School Works Inspection Team has been working with us through email and by phone, assisting us with the planning process and scheduling for the charter renewal site visit. The visit will take place over three days, on November 4th, 5th, and 6th. The inspection process will include thirty-four classroom observations, followed up with interviews. The inspection site visit team will meet with specific focus groups, general education teachers, special education teachers, students, parents, administrators, and the board. AMSA sent an alert to all parents this week looking for volunteers to participate in the parent focus group on Wednesday, November 5th. The eight parents who are participating in the focus group represent a diverse demographic profile, including grade level of children, gender, ethnicity, and town of residence. After the inspection site visit is concluded, the team of specialists will prepare a renewal inspection report summarizing the team's findings. The renewal decision is based on the school's performance over the current term in three areas, and again, you've heard these before, right? Faithfulness to the charter, academic program success, and organizational viability. And so we're looking forward to the visit from the inspection team, and hopefully, they're going to see our commitment to our mission.
Can we, so the session for the board is the 5th, I believe, as well?
Yes. Do you need acting funds, or do we just show up?
It would be good to know.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
Time of day?
One to two.
Am I on that too? Sometimes I never am.
Yeah. You are, you're also going to be in probably the other room.
What do we need to do, Sarah? You're actually in all three. There you go.
The location hasn't been specified yet though, has it?
I'm sorry.
The location of the one to two meeting, has it been specified?
Yes, your meeting will be the conference room that they use for the student services. It'll be there, but you'll be getting an update.
Okay. All right.
And, oh, is this? This is the next exciting segment of the D report. Next, I would like to welcome the head of our Science and Computer Science Department, Scott Jurey, and head of our English Department, Mike Lobowski, who's also our curriculum director, Louie Schmidt, Department Head for Mathematics, and Lisa Ruschin, head of Politics, and they're going to talk to you folks a little bit about our MCAS and AP scores and other things on their mind.
So thank you, board, parents, students who are still left, for having us today. I'm actually really excited to do this presentation, which is shocking, because this doesn't really excite me all that much, but Dr. Demello coming in has really kind of influenced and encouraged growth in me that I've never had before in my nine, what, eight years here now? And I learned prezi for this presentation, so, you know, making me a better person. So this is a little bit different of a presentation than what we normally give, you know, it's not the same old slides. It's going to have sound. It's got a lot of stuff in here. You know, it's not the same old slides that Jay had presented every year, it's a little more dynamic, and it models a little bit of what we're trying to promote. So without further ado, pretty much what we've always done in the past is we've celebrated all of our successes and put our academic achievement way up high, like a headline to a newspaper, AMSA Academics Still On Top, and that's certainly the case, we are still on top. You know, you've seen our MCAS results, I think they were presented last meeting a little bit, specifically these slides, so we're going to go over these, but we're going to go into a little bit more depth and then change things up a little bit.
Okay, so MCAS results in math, we are concentrating on our 10th grade results as usual, because our program prepares students to pass the final exam, but as you can see, other results in other classes are not bad as well. And important thing that we do not teach to the test, and we believe our math program prepares students for college and beyond, we will talk about that today. And so far, we didn't tweak our program for new standards, and this year's results actually shows that our students are ready to take this exam and based on the new standards, because this year, MCAS was based on 2011 standards and Common Core. So we are really happy about that. And, yeah, and we are, and we are happy, we are happy to see not only final results, but our students grow, and on this slide, you can see results of lowest part of our seventh grade, and how much they grow, they grew in 10th grade. So if you can compare, you see the difference between their seventh grade result and 10th grade.
And these are the lowest performers in the seventh grade?
Yeah, the lowest performers in seventh.
That was when they, when they were in seventh grade.
So the blue one, the blue one is what they did when they, how they did when they were in seventh grade, and the red one shows how they performed in 10th grade. So I believe this is pretty powerful slide.
Now, we do want to point out, this is this year's junior class, which is our largest class, it's 191 students right now, is that correct? Something wrong with that?
Yeah, right around there.
When they were in seventh grade, there were 270 of them. So this was the class where we, Admiral McGann, opened it up to a whole lot of people. This only compares the 26 students who performed at the lowest level who are still in the school. Obviously, we don't know what they did in their other schools in 10th grade, but that's how we did, how we drew the comparison.
So it's not the 26 lowest of each group, but rather the same 26 kids?
These are, of the students who are still here, it's 26.
Exactly the same 27, so number one is exactly the same person who was in seventh grade and in 10th grade.
Now, it's also important to note that we're, in some ways, we're comparing apples and oranges a little bit, because their 10th grade test is based on the Common Core standards that were adopted in 2011. Their test that they took in seventh grade was still primarily based on the old standards, so it's not exactly the same standards, but as Ms. Schmidt did say, we haven't changed our curriculum for the test, so it shows that we've always been doing the things that we're already looking for.
Great job.
Nice. Awesome.
Sorry for the motion sickness, I tried not to make it too drastic, but I got a little excited.
So here for science, again, eighth grade test is five different subjects, and 10th grade test is one, so comparison directly is kind of pointless. We're still doing really well, I mean, we saw the data last month, so.
Is that, so that's, is that the eighth grade, same kids?
The current 11th grade.
No, that's this 2013 data, so our, this year's ninth grade and this year's 11th grade, as they took it in spring last year.
In science, they only take an eighth and tenth?
I think third, fifth, eighth, and tenth, but here, that's only eighth and tenth, yes.
So in English, again, we've done really well, I think this is five or six years in a row, we've been number one, 100% advanced or proficient, again, we saw this slide, you know, we do well all the way throughout, but again, just like math, what we want to start focusing on is more of the students who didn't do so well perhaps, and then as how they grew throughout the time. So, you know, really proud of this one, a student came in in the 220 in seventh grade, and we tried to compare the seventh and the 10th grade tests, because they both have the long comp, so it's as close to an accurate assessment as it can be. And then that student went all the way up to being advanced last year when they took the test, which is amazing.
That's awesome.
On the other hand, you know, one of the things I, I'm a little bit hesitant on with English MCAS scores, is this really is a good ballpark of where they're at, because one person grading an open response or a long comp that has a point one direction or the other, shows a few points growth on this, where it could just be a little bit imbalanced between scores. So it's nice to see, and we do like to see the growth there, but we do want to focus more on how we're growing all of our students, and not just for this test, because this test is just to get out of high school again. But we want to really prepare them, like Ms. Schmidt talked about, for college and then beyond. So our AP scores, still outstanding, you know, we have looked at each individual, and I think these were presented last meeting as well, is that correct? So we don't need to go into any detail on them. What we really want to do though is change this question for next year, and that's something that, you know, certainly like the Education Committee to think about. Rather than report out that a specific AP score had an average of this, really what we want to be focusing on is how many students are taking that course, and what percentage of them are earning a three or higher, that would give them the college credit. So rather than say we had an average of 3, 8, 9 in European history, we'd like to say that out of the 22 students who took it, 100% got a three or higher. We think that's a more valuable piece of data, it's less stress on the teacher, it's less stress on the students, and what we're hoping is that more teachers and students will be willing to take the class, because we're not worried about an average that has to get reported out to the board, which most of our teachers have stated, this slide makes them extremely nervous, because they don't want their scores to dip, or it's seen as they did something wrong. So we really want to change that conversation to getting more students involved, within reason, and we'll talk about that more later, but focus on getting them college credit, and the college experience, which is really the most valuable part of this, rather than just what is their score.
For most colleges, it's a three or higher, or is it four or higher for 17th grade?
It depends on the school, depends on the school, depends on the subject, and it depends on the student's major.
The way that the College Board reports, they always go with a three or higher on their reports, so that's why we'd advocate doing the same thing.
Do I use a distribution as opposed to an average score?
I think it would cause the same type of things. If a student, one student has a score, then it shows that I didn't do something well enough, or?
Embedded in those scores, I can speak personally to AP Chem. I mean, if you go back one slide, there is a significant drop. Why? If you look at it, I did something wrong. What you don't see is that there was a different test completely. What you don't see is there were students that took the test that did not take my course, which is factored in there. But if you look at the aggregate data as to where AMSA did versus the, literally the world, the proportional drop is the same. So, we're proportionally factoring everything in at 4.2. The world is at 2.6.
Also, like, for instance, I just know mine, but the AP Gov, it goes down a little bit. But what does, is not factored in there is that I had more than tripled the number of students that access. I'm really proud of increasing the access, and I had like triple the number of students take that test. So, if you increase access, then you're going to, it comes with a cost, but it's such a worthwhile cost.
And that was one of my questions every single time. When we looked at this the last time, I knew we were going to dive in deeper. Is that, are we increasing the number of students every year? Because that, to me, is a success that we're not really demonstrating.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to AP Chem. We've gone from 13 now to 25. This year is 38.
But again, we do have to consider proportionally. The 11th grade is our largest class. That's who's in AP Chem right now, for example. So, yes, we've increased the numbers of students taking it, but the class sizes are also larger each year who go through, which is why we want to focus on, you know, how many students are taking them? Are they doing what's appropriate for them, not overly taking APs and stressing themselves out? And what percentage of them are doing well, meaning a three or above?
And I'd also be interested in understanding relative to everyone else. Are we seeing the same shifts because the test changed?
Yep, AP does provide that information. Almost question by question breakdown, how many students did a multiple choice versus the rest of the world? Where the teacher positions those students to be successful? I mean, I had a small heart attack when I saw that data over the summer because it was pre, and I brought this up to Dr. Demello. It is terrifying because I had to go and report to you guys our scores. That was always said to us.
That was never the intention.
No, no, Nate, I'm not blaming the score at all, trust me. That was the fear that was put into us. And I actually asked Dr. Demello to address the AP teachers.
We're okay with throwing previous administration under the bus?
We're not throwing previous administration.
I said we, I said we, not you.
No, if I can, yeah, if I can just quickly comment on that. So, the important thing for the board to understand is the perception from the teachers for, you know, we don't need to go backwards on it. It's clearly that was a tremendous amount of pressure and stress that the teachers were feeling and anxiety about the concept that from one year to the next, some informational points may be put up there that show a drop or a change, and they were fearful of that. So, you know, we had the conversation with them now, and they understand that their job is to, you know, get kids to take the AP tests and to enroll in AP classes if it's appropriate for them. But we also, it's a good opportunity just to pause to make sure that folks at home understand that, you know, what students are taking has to be appropriate for them. There is an incredible pressure here, which is leading students to have, you know, higher than, but probably people would be surprised, you know, depression and thinking about self-injury and other things. The stress is tremendous, and nothing, you know, no grade, no AP or anything is worth that. So, that's why, we'll talk about it later, but that's why we're thinking about doing a separate spinoff of stress assessment when it comes to surveys. And that's why one of our focal points this year in working with staff and students is going to be around stress and so on. So, I just, so folks know, that's how the teachers are feeling, regardless of what, you know, how the board had handled it.
I really appreciate hearing that. That's, I wasn't aware of that perspective even, you know, with the deep dive sessions and all of that. And, you know, I think it's great what you're doing. I think it's great that you're looking at different ways to present the data because we have to figure out, and I'm new, so I, you know, coming from a place of relative ignorance, but what's the right thing for us as a board to be looking at? And I don't think it's anything that's measured in hundreds of points. You know, and so the kind of, you know, and maybe the, Mike, the, maybe the metric that you described is the perfect one, you know, maybe, maybe not. But, you know, we should be looking for that. What do we really need to know and what's going to tell us? And I think at a board level, it's kind of what's going to tell us the school is going in the right direction for where it needs to be five years and 10 years from now.
Our thoughts on that are that what we come from is that we want to do what's best for the kids. And that means offering courses. That means pushing them to take courses and give them the experience of a college-level course. But it also means protecting them from going overboard with what they're doing as well and taking too many or ones that aren't necessarily going to be healthy or helpful for them in the future.
So, more is better, really, I think.
Correct. The whole purpose is to learn how to think and learn like a college student. So, to prepare yourself to be an independent learner so that you're prepared for college. If you really want to look at it, that's our ultimate goal. And that should be the student's ultimate goal around a subject that they're passionate in and good at.
From the board's perspective, I'd say, yeah, I mean, I've seen this data now for two years and then before that, before I was on the board. I think our role, this is a measure, right? I mean, we need to look at some measure of APs, it's some metric. I don't know that I've ever heard that the board said it had to be this measure. And I'm not sure why this.
I mean, in my time on the board, I never heard that about it.
Yeah.
But that's what was told to us from the administration, was that this is how it had to be presented.
I think we.
It was a pressure to show growth.
But the growth isn't shown by this.
And maybe it wasn't that it had to be, but look at it, it's quite impressive. So, why not make it that? Because it's impressive, but let's think about what this.
These are numbers, but we're talking about people. So, why are we comparing, why are we measuring our people by that?
We're measuring people and students.
Well, but the fear would be that you're measuring the teachers.
Right.
Exactly.
But I'll guarantee you, a student thinks you're measuring him or her.
And I'd say the last thing we want is for a teacher to be stressed because that stress translates to the student. And that's, I mean, our kids are already stressed enough, and they're taking these classes, and they want to be successful. So, the teacher's pushing them harder because they want to be successful. And, you know, I want them to be pushed, but we don't want to reach a level too high in stress.
All right.
So.
I was supposed to suggest, propose what a more appropriate measure would be.
We're going to show you.
So, we're going to get there. So, the other things that we tend to focus on in the past are things like accolades. So, Ms. Schmidt, I'll give you the honor since this just happened a couple of days ago.
Yeah, so we're just, our students continue to find joy in solving non-standard problems and to participate in different competitions. And this is our recent achievement, WPI Math Week, which is very prestigious competition, invitational competition that opens to public and private schools. And we are the first time where we're second in this competition that we are really proud of. But along with what we are discussing today, most, we are most proud that our upper school math team is open to all students who would like to participate in high school, in upper school math team. This is, we believe, is absolutely extraordinary for. And we have, we have about 60 students. Yeah, this is a lot.
I would think a math team is like 50.
Yeah. So, this is what we're really, really proud of.
So, here again, AMSA does win 1080 National Championship for National STEM Competition. We're about to embark in our third season, but I'd like to hold off and push the focus onto that a little bit later.
So, when we think about ourselves as we, as we grow in our workplace, really our business, this is a quote that we use in guidance, I have it framed into my office, to help with kids who are, they're comparing themselves too much to their peers. Because really, our only business in life is to get ahead of ourselves, to break our own records. So, this is what we want to continue to focus on. We should teach our kids to learn how to grow, to be collaborative, responsible adults, team members, not individuals. So, this is more about what we're going to be talking about. If you go down to the bottom, we work our way up. Our first graduating class, 74% of the students took at least one advanced placement course in their four years of high school. The next graduating class went up to 77, and then up to 79. Last year's graduating class, 86% of the students took at least one, and 94% of them earned a three or higher, which is fantastic.
That is stunning.
And 94% of the tests that they took, not just the students.
Sorry, that's right, thank you.
They took multiple tests.
And then this year's graduating class, 85% in line with last year's, they've taken at least one advanced placement course in their four high school years. And when we look at the number of courses offered from 2010 up to 2015, we're offering more courses, but we're also offering the courses that the kids have asked for. They've asked for AP Psychology, AP Macro, AP Art. And so, Student Government did a survey a few years back, and we use that data to bring in more classes. So, this is exciting for us.
So, along with that, though, we need to make note that our student anxiety levels are very high. And it's because students feel pressured. And we hear it every year around January when it's time to start registering for classes. I have to take four APs because my friend is taking four as well, and I have to keep up with them, or I have to take five. And the students are really overly just stressing themselves out with what they need to do in order to be like their peers.
You didn't start it over again, were you?
I'm afraid that our children are going to sue us for stealing their childhoods.
I would spend six hours a night on my homework.
We have to go into the top schools.
We have to take tests and interviews.
It's going way into the extreme.
We're all caught up in it.
In America, if you don't earn a lot of money, something went wrong.
The pressure comes from the colleges, from the parents, from the government, but it has to stop.
You have to do well now so you can get into the college.
Everyone expects us to be superheroes.
You have a fear from the parents that my kid needs to be able to get a job.
How do you expect it to do well when you can't even make mistakes?
You're dedicating your whole life to your grades.
You have to be smart, you have to be involved in the arts.
I have soccer practice every day, plus the homework on top of that.
Produce, produce, produce.
It's impossible.
I couldn't cope.
I've gone through bouts of depression just because you feel so swamped.
I almost like had an emotional breakdown.
There have been six suicides in our school district.
Our students are pressured to perform.
They are not necessarily pressured to learn deeply and conceptually.
But what does that quite mean when we have a whole population of dancers and doctors who've been trained from script?
Things that actually get our students to think are pushed aside.
These kids come to the table with this creativity and this love of learning?
Let's just not take it out of them.
I think the United States really needs to rethink how we do schooling. The economic future of the country depends on our athleticism.
We need to redefine success. It's got to be something we do together, all of us as a society, almost as a movement.
Jobs need you to be a critical thinker, and they need you to be a problem solver.
We need to really think, what does it take to produce a happy, motivated, creative human being?
So, that's obviously an excerpt, a little preview of Race to Nowhere, which is a fantastic film. We're actually talking, and talks about how to allow that to be viewed by both our teaching staff as a whole again and as well as by parents at a night, because it really highlights the pressures. You know, we definitely have stress here at a very high level. For those of us who are lucky enough to be at MasQ today, Conference, we heard a senior from Hopkinton High speak. And she did a lot of independent research where she had 1,600 students from around the state respond to a survey, female students. 50% of them responded to committing self-harm. That's 800 of the 1,600 respondents harm themselves on a regular basis because of stress levels, and that's how they get it out. It's a serious problem, and we want to help to teach students not only their academics, but how to cope and all these other skills that are really, really important, and help them be healthy individuals, not just academic superstars. So, one of the ways we do that, and it's a quote that you just heard, "Our students are pressured to perform," and that's very true here, "but they're not necessarily pressured to learn deeply and conceptually." And that's something that we're passionate about trying to change. And really, that's what the rest of this presentation is. It's one of the things that we would like to focus on and change our conversation. Our conversation shouldn't just be, "Look how we do, how wonderful we're doing it," or "Look how great we are compared to such and such." You'll notice the slides that are missing here from today's presentation from the past years. We're not comparing ourselves to Natick or Acton, Boxborough, or Dover, Sherborn. That's not how we believe it should be. And we hope that our kids understand that that's not how we think they should be. We care about improving ourselves and having a well-balanced life, and we want them to have the same. Right? If I ask every one of your parents here, "What do you want for your children?" It's not going to be to get straight A's. It's not going to be to get into Harvard or MIT. You want your children to be happy. We all want that. I know that's the case. So, why would we want anything less than that for our students? So, getting a little bit worked up here. I'm trying to slow it down. But that's really what the rest of this is about, is how we would like to change our conversation as a governing body of the school. So, we start to focus on the emotional health as well as the intellectual health of our students. So, one of the things we'd like to do is redefine success, right? These, you know, came right off of our website, a couple of students who went out and did things that they were interested in. These are internships that they sought out over the summer, things that they want to do. And they had great experiences, and they came back and they shared these with us. And you can read, you know, the details of these on the site. We don't want to spend time with you reading slides off. But we want to redefine what it means to be successful. It's not just preparing your college resume, essentially. It's about doing things that are valuable and important to you, helping the community, developing yourself. We want to, you know, implement different things that we haven't done yet. We do have a wonderful day where we don't give homework, AMSA unplugged. We did that last year once, we're trying to do that twice this year. Wouldn't it be great? And I don't know if the students will agree with this. If we had a homework-free weekend where they can actually go out and have fun with their friends, plan something ahead of time, give it notice, right?
I completely agree, though, I love it.
I hope so, and I've got you in one of these pictures pretty excited. I know he's in there, too.
Exactly, that video spoke to what AMSA students are. I love it.
So, we'd like to, we'd like to start doing some of these things where we say, "We don't just care about the academics, we care about your social and emotional well-being." And you saw one of the videos already from Eva from sixth grade. This is another one that she did just recently. Yeah. You know, nobody asked Eva to do that film. She did it on her own because she enjoyed what happened, just like she enjoyed the Intel presentation, and she went and did that. And some of the things that we do are so much more valuable than what happens inside the classroom. That sixth-grade climb of Mount Wachusett inspired her to create a film about it. That's wonderful, that's what we're seeking. Our ninth grader's going climb Mount Monodinic. And the experiences that they have there are life lessons. It's not easy, it's not an easy climb by any means. And for some of the kids, they're in great shape and it's okay. But, you know, just this last year, on the climb, what, three weeks ago or whatever it was, one of the students who's not in shape, first of all, all but five ninth graders went on the trip, and then the five that didn't had physical reasons why they couldn't. And all, 100% of them made it up to the top, which is an amazing accomplishment. It's 3,100. It's 3,166 feet to the top of that mountain. It's not an easy climb by any means. And one of the students who is out of shape, who I've observed in classrooms, a lot of times seems to not feel like can necessarily do what's in front of them, made it to the top, and I went over and congratulated him and said, you know, this was an amazing accomplishment. Let me ask you a question. How many times along the way did you wanna quit because you didn't think you can make it? He said, at least 1,000. So, that's 1,000 decisions you made to keep going when you didn't think you can do it. That is the most important lesson that kid is gonna have in his entire career in education. And it wasn't in a classroom, it was getting him out, doing something that was fun, that was experimental, experiential. That's what we wanna focus on, is building those things. So, while it's great to think of what we do, we don't want our best stories to be buried in the bottoms or in the insides of the paper. We want those to be the headlines. We wanna focus on a different kind of education that supports the whole student. So, like I said, we had 20 teachers over the last two days that were able to go to MasQ, which is a very large, or 1,400 participants there in all, technology conference, and there was a fantastic speaker, Dr. Mark Ed.